Roxy?
Here.
Commissioner Musilli?
Here.
And Commissioner Jeremy Davis?
Uh, present here.
Good job. Just in case you haven't been in the office the past couple of weeks, we do have a new staff person who will be taking minutes for ZBAs planning. And... Waisman?
Parker.
Oh, Parker, okay. Vlade Simpson. So let's welcome Vlade. Very, very, very capable, just fitting right in like... What did I say? Okay. Been no time whatsoever.
I like to strip that word "old" for minutes.
Oh, but you know, it's all relative. Look at it. It's all relative. Like I said. It's all good. Okay, approval of the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda for May 3rd, 2016.
Right.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Davis II and Commissioner Harris. All in favor? You know what, I need to back up a minute. Just a second. Because I want to share something with you. I just want to say... Brad, did you just go to give an agenda?
Yeah, but I saw that you had your own. I forgot to read it.
I think I... Waisman. I think I have the wrong one too. That's why I haven't...
Comedian?
The only thing on this is Gateway.
Right. And, um... Yeah, because you know what? Under new business, I'd like to add... I just want to say Main Street. Okay? In parentheses, Frank Rickert. Okay. What'd you reach it for?
That back.
You said "that back"? We're talking Canadian! Did you just say today?
Yeah.
Okay, approval of the minutes?
I just have to add Commissioners attending. I did not include Jeremy.
Yeah.
So, I would add number five is Jeremy Davis.
I know, but you don't do that.
I didn't say sorry buddy, but you don't have to say it.
That's alright.
She didn't ask.
Our new office person's here. She'll make a note of that.
She said they might already be there.
Right.
Okay, Main Street. Okay. Motion to, uh... Did we do that? Motion to approve the agenda? Okay. Jeremy and Harris, right? Okay, cool. Public hearing, none. Did anyone receive any communications correspondence?
I don't think we did a roll call on...
On the minute, I mean on the agenda.
If we haven't done a roll call on agenda, we haven't done the minutes.
You didn't amend it, you didn't do anything?
We didn't do a motion on the minutes. I just didn't correct them.
Oh, okay. That's what I was asking. Okay, so a motion to, uh... Is in order to approve the minutes?
No, that's not...
April? For April?
Nobody... Nobody made a motion to approve the minutes. We made a motion to approve the agenda.
That's what she said. She said the motion's in order to approve the minutes.
Have we done a roll call on the agenda?
Yeah, it's all for it.
Oh, okay. So just minutes?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion by Musilli to approve the April 5th minutes as a support?
House support as amended the April 5th.
Okay.
That's what I'm actually saying.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Public hearing, Harris, none. Did anyone receive communications correspondence that we need to share with board? Mr. Platter, you don't have anything to share with us.
Nothing.
Okay. We're gonna get you busy though in the morning. Matters of consideration. O'Build Business. Gateway Project Discussion. Okay. This is on the agenda because at the last council meeting, we were given an assignment. And... And it's about Gateway Project that we've been talking about. And the council is interested in a recommendation from this committee that, um... It's kind of like a schematic presentation of what we think that corner should look like. Nothing is etched in stone. But the ideas, and whatever idea we come up with, doesn't have to be cumulative. It could be something that, that is done, you know, over a period of time. But they're looking for leadership from this committee in terms of a recommendation on what it should look like. Okay? I didn't feel like I could refuse since we are a recommendation committee and it kind of came from the table. So, that, we need to discuss this. We need to now start sharing our ideas about what that intersection is going to look like. But again, don't let, don't necessarily limit yourself because there are a number of possibilities. And nothing has to be done at one time. So I want to open that up for discussion. And take leadership from our plan. Because one of the things I liked about the discussion at the council meeting was that they recognized the beautification efforts that we put in the master plan. And that this was in accordance with the plan. So, I mean, I was, I was pleased that, that that happened. Now, I want to start with a question though to the planner because one thing that was never discussed at the council meeting was if we talk about a, a, a drawing, some kind of image of what that corner's gonna look like, who pays for that? So I'll consider it my problem because they just said, "Let's refer this back to planning. You guys come up with a scheme for us of what this thing will look like."
Let me, let me just interfere. That's not the way council take it. A sign has already been chosen for that area and they want us to work around, around the actual sign. And the sign has already been picked out by majority of the council and the village president. We do know the sign that we're going with. We just want, they want some...
A scheme of what the whole thing is.
And I think we're gonna be doing this probably in phases. And to answer the question about the cost, we discussed it, cost and that wasn't a cost set. Whatever the cost is, at this point, there's gonna be a cost coming from the village.
Okay. Yeah, I think I agree with what you said. Let me start with the, the basic brick design that you were talking about. But they, they wanted a picture of what the whole thing was going to look like. Just some...
They want a picture around the sign. Let me just pass the sign down so you guys... I, I, did you get... Let me, yeah.
I did find it.
I, uh... First time, I don't know what I was doing, but did not get it to you. But, just let me try and explain to you. The first part of that sign is, is the one sign itself. And that sign actually, uh... The council wanted to see it in a, in a V shape, which is basically two signs. If it was coming off of, and then that's what the third, third or fourth page shows you. I don't think the council has looked at it as... I don't think they have the vision of, of looking at... And I think when we, when I gave them the sign, they were looking at, okay, coming in, coming into grassy, it was gonna be a sign going straight across. That's not the way it goes. It goes straight on an angle, going back. And it, and it shows on that. So what we did, we went out with the guy from the sign company and actually stood out here and took pictures. And, and then, and now you can actually see how, I mean, get a good vision of what it actually looks like.
So it's not gonna be two sides, it's gonna be more like...
Yeah, it's, you can do it two ways.
I'd love to see that. That's one side?
Either two of these in the middle or one of them in the middle.
It's gonna be like a...
No, one of those just like that. Just the way that's set right there, that's one side. Now go back to the third, fourth page.
Well, I understand the square, but so if they had two, it would have like two of this section with this...
No, two of that.
Okay, go back to the fourth page.
That actually goes this way and the other one would go that way. So they're there for two signs, that's what they did there.
Yeah, okay.
Right.
So it wouldn't be two.
Right.
Oh, the whole thing. I thought, I thought the part in the middle would...
Yeah, it came down with it.
It's by itself.
Yeah, I know it's not.
I think, I think you get the same idea, but I don't know.
As opposed to what you had said?
Yeah, you know, that's what I said. I think their vision, their vision was seeing the sign going straight across.
That's what I was thinking.
That's what I think their vision was.
Who's that?
The council.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's not that. Because if it went straight across, you would only see the...
The one side.
The one side. And if you was coming grassy, that would...
It's gonna set like a square.
I think the front one is gonna be really better than that.
Like, like the, like the Mason, you know, like a square. What it's gonna set in a V.
If you did it two sides.
Yeah, if you did it two sides.
But if you do it the one side, it will be... And you know, slant it this way and you can see it from there.
Is it gonna be, this is one side?
Probably.
This is, the front one is the one?
Yeah.
Is that the angle it would be on right there?
Yes. I think their, their vision was seeing it going straight across.
Yeah, yeah.
See, I kind of like just a thought. I kind of like it on, so if this is your corner on an angle like this, so you can catch it coming up grassy, if you go with one, plus you can catch it coming up nineteen.
Well, that's why we did it two sides.
And I, yeah. So is that the preference, the two? Is that already chosen?
No, it's not, it's, no, but they, they... The way it sounded, it sounded as if they were willing to spend the money to do it both. I mean, do it two sides.
Yeah, I like that.
And where we talked about backlit so that at night, that's, that sign goes...
New Haven is lit and the emblem, where the village field is lit.
Okay. Now, what I'm curious about is, um... Can we, can, this artwork that they gave you? Can we add stuff?
That's what council want planning to do.
Okay, so it's like what, um... It's just like, what is that called? That, uh... That, um... Software, it's called Photoshop.
Right.
So we can take Photoshop? And is it compatible with this?
Well, which one? What are you talking about? This is what you're...
Well, we need to make a recommendation is what we do. Which one we like the best? And then add stuff. Did, did people get copies of the Anne Freiburg survey? You need that. Do you still... I think you need one more, do you? You need to get everything.
Oh, I'm good.
Give it to them. Did you get a copy?
No.
Okay, and this thing is not scientific. Okay? It is not a, a representation of, of the population even in the community. But what I liked about it is that it identified some issues. You know, so the fact that only four percent of one and only, and fifty percent of another is there, you know, is not a scientific survey, but it just lets you know. People are thinking about art. People are thinking about maintaining community. But then they're talking about urban developments. And the fact that somebody bothered to even respond, you know? Just to trick yourself into some conversation as to something else that people are thinking about for that, for that corner. Jeff, I was just, I was curious. Is there, is there someone on your staff that could take this and render some more, you know, greenery or artwork, trails, whatever?
I would think so, yeah. We do, we do, we do have, we do have some capacity to do that. I guess it really depends on what, what type of elements we're talking about, what we would like to add. We, we work best in, we work best in this type of an orientation. So if we're, you know, in terms of a plan, a metric type of a plan, that's what we're accustomed to doing. We can do something like this, I guess it depends upon the, how elaborate you're looking to go.
Okay.
So, yeah, we, we, it's something we can definitely take a stab at.
Brad, remember back in the day when we were looking at Main Street? And somebody did a drawing. Who did that? Was that Arroyo did that? Who did that? You know what I'm talking about? We were talking about the antique? Village and it was Main Street before the buildings got torn down.
Yeah, the planners did it. Virtual or...
Yeah.
They give a, a street skate type of, uh...
Yeah, and some ideas for us to look at.
Yes, they were so good, they won a contest.
Stop. Really?
We haven't seen a building yet.
You, you haven't had one hundred of your old boxes or something?
Probably did.
Yeah, because it, you know, this is in an all modern software and all that. But that thing, it had dimensions and it was like a...
Actually, it probably would have been in that ninety-eight, um, plan. Wouldn't it be? Actually, the last time the master plan was done, prior to you finishing up this one here.
Don't think I have a copy of, seem happy with that whole...
Well, that's the one that we...
Do you guys have a copy of the ZBAs in the file?
We do. I do, I do not have a copy of it, no. But that was done by Virtual Aurora, my idea.
Right. It wouldn't be hard to get one.
Realistically, when could we get something to the council? You know, I, I'm comfortable with us giving them an update that we discussed it and with the understanding that at a certain date, we would get something to them, an image to them. I know we can't do it by next week, but I'd like us to give them an update at the meeting in terms of what elements will be involved. And, and that we'll get something to them that they can look at before the next, very next meeting.
I just...
The problem is, I mean, I don't know what type of people you have on your staff, but you're looking at somebody who may, may or may not have basic knowledge of Photoshop to basically a landscape architect.
Kevin, you're, you're...
I could, I could take and duplicate trees and drop them in place, but I don't know how to design a park, which is basically what you're asking someone to do without any design background.
Yeah, I looked through my paperwork to see if I could find the Virtual Aurora. Aurora, please, show it to you, but I, I don't know where this stuff is at.
That's the type of person you need to do the rendering.
We gotta flood it, kind of flood it, that stuff that way. That probably will be thrown away so that you could, it didn't take them a long time to get it to us.
I mean, I'm halfway decent at Photoshop, but I couldn't go a year. I couldn't even think of how to design an area like that because I, that's not what I do. But somebody like that who that's what they do, if they're like a landscape architect, if you tell them, "You want to turn that area into like a park-like setting with seating and a spig sculpture and..."
You're right, yeah, exactly.
Someone they can whip that up easily.
Yeah, but it wasn't a perfect sculpture. It is...
No, it was a representation of, you know, something like Guff.
Yeah, twenty feet high.
But that still takes somebody with that type of a design background.
Absolutely.
It's like, you know, you know how to use Photoshop and you've used InDesign. It's like if I told you, "I want you to design the next website for General Motors." Now, I get asked to do that. I don't have a problem with it because that's what I do every day. But I don't know where to put a bush or a tree or a park bench.
It's a, it's a, it's a creative, it's just a, it's a vision.
Yeah, use this all...
And then you're gonna have to walk, walk it so that the proper setbacks and all that are there, the zoning is, you know, is all...
You gotta make sure the zoning's there, house without making sure that...
Well, that, that comes later. We're talking about designing, rendering. But there's a difference between, like, I'm pretty good at Photoshop, but I don't know how to design an area like that. I couldn't even, in life of me, I could, I could spend a lot of time in there. It's always look like anything.
Yeah.
We, we do, we do, we do have a person on staff who does have, who does have some experience in doing this, who's done, who's done a little bit of park layout. But what he's really done, he's really kind of added enhancements to other things that are there. Brad is right. I mean, or, I'm sorry.
Bill.
Bill's right. You, you would be best served here by a landscape architect?
You don't have one?
We do not have one on staff. No, that is nuts. That is nuts.
Can you get one?
Should we get one?
Can you hire one for us for this?
No, because my, my thing is this. The council knows what we have access to and what we don't. We're, we're a recommendation body. And they didn't discuss money. They said, "Bring us back a schemat, you know, a schematic view to help us visualize." And I was glad to hear that they admitted that they couldn't see it, you know? So, and now we've had, we got a basic to start with. Now you start glossing. Chuck, come on in.
I just have a question. You're moving forward based on a very elementary survey. Does the planning commission, does the planning commission plan on having a broader survey to the entire residents of the unit before you move forward?
More ideas would be very, very helpful. And we were hoping that there were, you know, there would be more people here, including council people, who were divided on an individual basis. And as enthusiastic as they were two weeks ago, I see how many of them are here.
I think, what, you talked to a hundred people?
We had one here for a minute.
And that was...
So we had one here for a minute.
Somebody else came? I missed him.
You got, was here for a minute.
Oh, that's right. That's who Chris is. Okay. I'm sorry.
We got Brett here though.
Yeah, but Brett, Brett is here.
He doesn't count.
Yeah, he's in, he's here for, you know, in a different capacity. He's our liaison to the council. You know, so his, his interest is really different to that. He's, he's still the village. We're the people.
You ain't the people, Brett.
He's, no, he's, he's authority right now.
Not my comment.
Yeah, he's authority when he sits at this table.
Probably would want to give my comment.
But you, you are authority.
Yeah, we are.
You're the man.
I always like your comments.
At this table. So, we represent the people. So... But I hear you. I hear you, Chuck. You know, I was hoping, basically from the comments from the council, that at least three of them would have been here with comments. You know, but, but they're not here, so I'm not gonna let them, you know...
I'm sure we all got...
Stop our thinking process, you know, my thinking process.
Well, I'm sure we all got the email from Councilman Venderdeco. I don't know, I haven't seen it, but he sent it shortly before the meeting.
No, I didn't see it.
So, he said that he had wanted, uh, and he apologized for the late notice of sending it, but he wanted to, uh, he thought having something that represented the village symbol. Some, some kind of structure, something that represented the village symbol would be something that he would prefer. Two fists clasped together in unity. Something that, he has his thoughts. He said he apologized for not being able to make it. Something like that. So anyways, um... You know, I think that, you know, we can throw out there, I guess, whatever, you know, we want to throw out there. I mean, that's, I think essentially what you're, what you're saying. But, you know, I think we need to, before, in my opinion, before we had Jeff or any of these people in his office work on anything, we need to figure out kind of what we are thinking about, what we want to do in that area. I mean, what we recommend that the village do. I mean, do, you know, I mean that... Are we thinking that we want seating areas? Are we thinking that we want whatever? I know that Trusty pride more put together a survey that you yourself said was kind of rudimentary.
Oh, it's helpful.
It's helpful.
Yeah, yeah.
People responded to it.
Yeah, because it's a start.
Right, right. I think that Chuck was, uh, talking about expanding upon that, which I don't think is a, is a terrible idea.
I don't either.
You know, to try to open up a survey that maybe gets put forth, maybe that's what we should work on, is to try to figure out if that's what we're thinking. I mean, if we're just talking about brainstorming, maybe there should be some kind of, you know, session that we have for, for brainstorming or something like that at a later date, set something up for that. Because I think there's a lot of things that can bounce off the walls. We could be here all night trying to bounce things off the wall about what we think should go there or what we shouldn't. You know, but I think that this is all coming to us right now. I think that's something that we could definitely, rather than try and rush something into council next week, maybe come back next week with some thoughts and opinions of the council, not put up the sign, you know, on Tuesday.
No, my, my, my comment earlier was, um, you know, certainly, they can't see the, you know, the recommendation, the total recommendation by next week, but they need an update. They need to know that we discussed it. And one of the things I'd like, one of the things I would like to do is to, um, is as a committee, since they assigned this thing to us, is to support the recommendation of the placement of the sign.
Okay.
As recommended by Mr. Harris, Commissioner Harris. So that we have at least an angle. We got the sign and then we take it for lit. And, and start, so that there is some progress. That would be the, the only report that they would get next week from us is the recommendation that Mr. Harris is giving us about the position.
Yep.
And then we can start, that gives you a basic... Yeah, that gives you a basic picture and have them, shit, I mean shots, uh, give us, you know, another... See, when y'all weren't here, that's, that wouldn't matter. But, um, it was, that was...
It was, it was, uh...
You know, and then, yes, and then, yes. Yes, and then we can take it to consideration, uh, you know, I, I agree, we can do something... Somewhere else we get a greater response, but I think this is something. Freiburg pulled together after last meeting and shouted out there like the next two, three days. And it was, it's better than nothing. What I like about it is that it identifies concerns. But it doesn't limit us to anything. It's just step one. And then, actually, step one is positioning the sign because that is concrete, it's real. And there is no corner without it. So, you know, I would like us to at least, um...
Trusty Harris, um, now, did you say that you guys had decide, hadn't decided yet whether or not to do it as a, as like a carver square or as a, uh, just a dual-sided sign?
The council has not seen the rendering, I mean, I just gave you... They chose to sign that they were, and they wanted to see it both ways. So you had a chance to see it before council.
I got you.
That's, I had given them like ten different signs, or maybe eight or so many signs, and that's the one that...
I get you. What's the timeframe that you think that, that...
I would like to have it in July, they laughed at me too. But I don't think, I mean, I don't, whatever happens, I'll do, it's not gonna all happen at one time, so...
No, correct. But if there is a plan to have the sign there first, the sign will spark a vision and it will spark conversation. I agree with you, Jeremy, but we could sit, you know, as a group, you guys could sit here and play out the corner. But with the sign there, it gives the community a vision.
Absolutely.
And then that could spark another survey, that could spark a workshop, bringing people in, you know, talk about what is possible out there. You know, if you're looking at a significant investment in the corner, that's something that everyone can get behind, I would agree with Bill, that I would look to a landscape architect. There's a number of firms out there that could provide that type of service. There would be a cost obviously associated with it. But I think the, I think the community would be best served doing that, maybe expending those dollars, because it will give you something more to reflect on and take into a group setting. And I think there's also some limitations to what you can do with the site in terms of what M data is.
Right.
I mean, we're really, I mean, we're really, we're pretty much being constrained to more landscaping benches and maybe some pathways through there.
Yep.
Could I ask a question, Brett?
No.
Is the size on the sign flexible? Could it be made higher?
Well, yes, I mean, the village is going a lot, I mean, we had stayed with, but they did, they probably, I think what they did, looked at our order and expanded.
The only reason I was asking just is because the barriers there on grass it? Like when you have to sign this way, and you look at the, you know, it's just kind of obstructed if it's that low? It's on the fifth page or the second to last page, you can kind of see it?
It was a curve.
You mean coming down, down grass it?
Coming down grass it, yeah. Are those staying there? I assume they are.
Yeah.
So I just wondered if it could be raised, if the, it could be raised, you know?
I think you're far enough from no barriers that you're gonna be able to see it anyway. Now, that, no tree, no trees are coming out there.
Right.
Brett, what is that height? Oh, here it is, I think.
It says eight.
Three. Like, when you look at it from the final page, like you do in that...
In the front, right there at the front?
Well, what?
You do see like that, you know, with those barriers there.
You do, correct, to replicate.
Well, that's just perspective, though, yeah. I don't know. Plus, it's just sort of on there.
That's...
Right, right, if it's to scale properly.
Yeah, it's just a thought.
Or put it up on the hill, I mean, make the foundation up higher.
That's what, that was my thought, yeah, just make it foundational or, like, everything the same, just...
Well, you could, step one can be recreated.
Right, well, that's, yeah, it's gonna have to be graded anyway.
So it goes up and then the sign...
Yeah, or you could just put a fern or something.
Right, and then black flowers or so around it in that primary.
Brett, could you verbalize a recommendation for us, just in terms of accepting this and moving it forward? Saying that planning likes the positioning that you guys are suggesting?
So which one is it?
Well, I like, I personally, I like the one that's in a square, like a carver square. Like a V, or however much we want, but...
I feel like the same way. And Jennifer, you do too?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, yeah, that one definitely looks, probably costs almost twice as much money, that's gonna be your, but you don't even have a budget, do you?
No, well, we knew what the one sign, I mean, it gave, the cost was gonna be, it cost in the area on the one. Actually, I gave you guys the last meeting. And actually, this is the same sign that I gave you, but it was designed by MLF Signs. That's what I gave you at the last meeting. But Philip Signs and MLF Signs have merged together. So there, that's why you see it, the different names.
Yeah, Philip's does a lot of work out here.
Has they been around for a long time?
Yeah.
Okay, somebody put that before I have a motion?
I made a motion that Trusty Harris take within the recommendation from this board that what we recommend as far as signage for the village and the new movement, right, order of order.
Okay, cool, give me a second.
Do you want to add which one?
Yeah, right, identify, yeah, that's what...
I mean, how do you want to identify which one, where you want it officially called?
How should we identify, Brett?
Page, double face, double face, double face, square.
It says two single sided signs.
Two single sided, yeah.
Two single sided.
Right, yeah, two single sided.
That's it, they're two single sided signs.
Okay. Friendly amendment that this recommendation is for this particular sign, it is as a basis from which we will develop. So they know that in the future, there's more coming.
True.
Okay.
I would just like to add to that amendment, just consideration of elevating either the sign or the land.
Okay.
Just to consider it, good?
You getting all this, Tom?
Yeah, I got it.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded to recommend the identified sign as the basis from which we will begin to develop a schematic view of the Gateway Project.
Ten seconds.
Seconded by Chuck.
Chuck.
Jennifer, we get that square, that's a little...
Yeah.
None of that Jennifer stuff, right?
Yeah, no.
Okay, all those, you know what, let's do a round call.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, Chairman Akers?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Rossi?
Yes.
Commissioner Masili?
Yes.
Commissioner Jeremy Davis?
Yes.
Oh, man, beautiful. Okay, any other comments in regards to the Gateway Project? Brett, did you want to bring to the table any other questions, comments?
Much love, Mr.?
Under New Business, I had it Main Street project. At the conclusion of the last council meeting, Frank Richter and I had a conversation. And he is, he expressed an interest in discussing the Main Street land with the planning commission. And I basically just want, you know, we didn't have enough time to do it this month, but I wanted to present it to everybody, to invite them to our meeting next month. Basically, what he said to me was, he was kind of like jovial and, you know, kind of laughing, that he heard about all these wonderful ideas for Main Street, but nobody came to him. And he's ready to talk about some ideas. And I wanted, I didn't want, the other reason why I didn't want to invite him to this one is that I wanted to give everybody a month to think about a solid idea for that space on Main Street. Even though from what I hear, he might be doing all the talking, because I get the impression that now there's something he wants to do. And that's why he's coming to us. And that was his purpose for meeting. One of the purposes of him being here at the meeting was to find out who is it that's talking about these grandiose ideas. And let him know, you know, I haven't said anything about it, but I took it as an open invitation. And instead of me meeting with him, I wanted to invite him to this committee to see what kind of ideas he's talking about.
I have two questions. What space are we talking about and who's Frank Richter?
The green space on Main Street, he owns every...
Where the hotel used to sit?
Where the hotel used to sit, all the buildings up to the old Union Hall. He owns that and he owns the lots on the other corner and everything that's running back. I did, you know, I heard about some of the, something that he's interested in, but I'm gonna wait and see if he brings that up. But I was just figuring, he's opening up the doors now because I have something he wants, something he has in mind. And he's a gregarious person, I did realize that in the ten minutes that we exchanged after the meeting and...
Is he a property behind it, with all the heavy equipment?
Yeah, he has everything. And that was basically, everybody's talking about condos, we took it with this, but nobody came to say a thing to me. You didn't even know what I wanted to do, did you? No, he said, "I just keep the grass cut there." I said, "No." He said, "Since you approached me, you know, let's do that, so..."
I have a comment.
Okay.
The next conversation you have with him. Because people have talked to him and he's not being all that cooperative. But that is a site I would love to see and I'd protect it and render on.
Okay. Brett, I want you to be here.
Bobby God?
Yes! I want you to be here. When we talk to this guy.
First, you gotta find someone that wants to develop it, and then he's gotta sell it.
Or we can be there.
Or he's gotta develop it himself.
I think that he wants, now that he has something he wants to do, meaning developing it himself. He wants to make some money.
Obviously, the first option, because it's his property.
Right.
You can't come in and own a condo up there and...
That's his point, but that was, that was his point, but he wanted me to, you know, remember people's property.
Ninety percent of the community probably thinks the village owns that property. That's why I'm always asking questions a lot, and people probably don't think it's private property.
Yeah, I think people in the village, you know, everybody's saying, something needs to be done with that space. But, you know, I agree with you.
And he owns from the tracks to Pasco, and then behind it, he's like...
Tracks to Pasco and everything.
Yeah.
Yeah, and two lots on the other side of Pasco going towards, going towards help. Just before you get to Haven Place. There's a...
You know where he's putting it?
Not that far down. Directly across from, well, Ann Street, where Ann Street comes out, that empty lot that goes right there in between those two homes. He owns that, and then he owns the one on the corner of Pasco and Main.
Okay, and then he owns too, the other corner of Pasco and Main?
No, he owns none of those.
I'm sorry, Brett, does he own the petty owned property too?
No.
Okay, okay. But he got, he carries those, right?
Right.
Now, how many acres does he have behind there?
Forty, well, there's forty acres where the foundry was up to Main Street and then going back to Roseville, there's another forty-two acres. It's eighty-two acres.
So he owns both of those two? Main Street and Roseville, that area with the building and the property?
On that. And then there, and then on, I mean, on the, Elaine, he owns two or three, they got lots back in there.
Mostly that mentioned, I'm sure he never pressed...
He's got all everything.
...the wire now, especially.
Right.
Transfer.
Well, I think if, you know, if the village owns something, or looking at any parts of it, we should stick with the front of your main street.
And I think that's what he's talking about, he's talking about the area where he keeps the rest.
And then it could be in the interest of what he could actually do.
Yeah, okay. I will, once I get that verified with him, I will send you out an email so that you know, you know, let's just be prepared, you know, with some stuff. And whatever it is he has to present, so I will go see him tomorrow. Matters for discussion? Anything or anybody's mind?
One thing on my mind, and I want to, because it's probably gonna, it may come to the next meeting. Hoseback, the one that bought the granger, is interested in purchasing the old lumber company. And back when he purchased that, we gave him a Class A, non-performance. And he's gonna be asking for the same thing on this, on this building here. Myself and Chris met with him and we were very impressed with what he actually wants to do. I'm just gonna pass this down, you guys take a look at it real quick, but I need it back. This is what he did to a building, or actually, one of the buildings is behind, the second one is the one that he did behind the granger, how he cleaned it up. And that's, the other one is what he did to one on Hubbard, when one down there took a look at that building. And he was doing that, enhance this building here and the village. But in order for him to do that, he's gonna need, I mean, he needs some help from council, from the village, I should say.
I think he'll be over there, I want to write up there.
Right, I mean, right along there, and he wants to clean it up.
I don't know, it's for sale.
No, yeah, it's been up for, it's been up for sales time, I took it long enough, I think, the guy wanted to limit his mouth. But he has an option on it, and he doesn't want to do anything with the option unless he knows for sure he'll know where it went and...
Maybe he'll play it in our tagline.
Right.
But what's another one, the small building in front of it?
Yeah.
Or he's playing a part.
Small, just attached to it.
No.
Oh, but they, yeah, they...
Small?
Home Services.
The one that's closer to Main Street, the one right in the middle?
Yeah, that's all attached.
That one's attached to the lawn, the one that's all, it's on the outside of the fence, closer to the main street. Boarded up.
Outside, yes.
Stop the, it's almost right in the corner of the main street, hey, there.
Yeah, so that's all attached, yes, that's all attached.
Okay.
Yes, the one that's attached, the wagon that's boarded up now is as one that, you know, he could really do something with it, probably open up as a storefront or something.
What type of business did he run on? Was he...
He said it was the type of a storefront, in that front.
And the storage area?
In the front building.
Yeah.
Back, because of the way the property is, I mean, doesn't front, there's not parking if you add, so, running so... Right off the bat, he would leave it as a, clean it up, fix, change the garage doors and so, and leave them as an inside storage. Because we wouldn't give them an outside, well, I don't suggest we give them outside, outside storage, but the...
But he did the elevator.
Right, right. So again, doing a storefront on the first end, and then as he, I guess, years, I mean, as it comes, he gradually did something to, you know, you're never gonna get a doctor's office in there or, I mean, for the zoning, that's his own, it's residential office.
So, yeah, okay, but yeah, they don't need anything.
No.
Does anybody know or have heard of anything in regards to the... Um, does anybody know, uh, or have heard of anything in regards to the, uh, the, uh, the property on Main Street that used to be the Poniana, the restaurant? Is anything happening, happening with that? Do you have anything to...
You're talking about Lewis?
Yeah, Lewis.
I know it's sold. I think the guy that bought it, this one, it flipped, I think, or something like that? He bought, I think he bought that.
It's been sold, I mean, this...
I think the same man bought that and, uh, Carolies.
And what?
Carolies.
Oh.
Sneak.
Not sneaky, I...
Well, they're both sold.
Uh, yeah, they're both sold.
I think that...
What's going in the sneak or something?
I mean...
So what's going in the sneak? Coyote, sneakers.
They, they have a potential buyer that not publicly, I'm gonna say right now. No, it's probably gonna come down.
It's a, it's a fire.
Yeah.
Demolished? You, you're saying the buyer, it's gonna come down?
There's a possi, there's a possibility it come down, and something much, much, much nicer to go up.
Oh, that'd be nice on that corner.
And I don't want to spoil it. And the one down here, so, and there's some...
A hiding map?
Some things going on.
Checkers?
Popeyes?
I think they're gonna get...
Popeyes, Baltimore.
Oh, no, this is supposed to be really nice.
Can't wait for Popeyes to come to Baltimore.
She likes Popeyes, I know.
Is it in Baltimore?
Yeah.
Real, real, uh, twenty-three?
Yeah, uh, Bill Salvation Army.
Wow, huge.
Didn't hear about that one.
Burger King and...
Yeah, Popeyes and Burger King.
And then they put the Hardest down there, twenty-three, in fifty-three.
Yeah, okay, then, Pup's Diamond.
You're gonna burn a restaurant.
I know, I know. I know, way up.
Pup's Diamond, on down the agenda items, Chuck! Yeah, I have a question for the panel.
Yes.
Could you give me a, uh, precise definition of eminent domain?
Precise definition of eminent domain? Uh, Donald Trump, though. I'll give you, I'll give you, I'll give you the textbook one they gave me in school, but it plays out a lot, it can play out differently in a lot of different jurisdictions. Generally, eminent domain is a taking, is a taking for the, taking by the public for a public good. An eminent domain, an eminent domain would been, when they built the freeway system, they data-take it, yeah, if it wasn't for the public good, that, you could put that...
Is it legal in Michigan?
Is it legal in Michigan? Yeah, I believe it, I believe it's legal in all states, if it's, if it's executed properly, yes.
Yeah. Yeah, and for instance, my folks, they took probably half of their front yard for eminent domain, because they need, it makes the road a boulevard. So, you know, they took probably half of their front yard and rear property space. Just for the public good, they need to add more lanes and roads.
Wouldn't Riverfront property do?
No.
Okay, I'm just saying, I know...
Those are riding trails.
In, in Detroit, they did that, with the river property, they did it for the good, the future to help, and just move them people out, yeah? Uh, anything on the plan?
It's a just copy. The only thing I would suggest, if you have this gentleman coming in next month to talk to us, and you're speaking to him, I would have him review, because I believe all this property falls in the general business downtown district, have him review Article, um, eleven of the zoning ordinance, because not only does it talk about, not if he's aware of this, not only is it talking about the types of uses that would be allowed there, the way this was set up by the previous, uh, planning, uh, there are a lot of design characteristics and stuff that, uh, that the village has control over, in terms of the facades, the types of materials, you might want to look over this to see what, um, constraints or what, let's say, opportunities in this case, would be available for him, um, in developing there. Not that, uh, comes in and says, oh, I want to do this, this, and this, and the first thing you slap is, well, it doesn't fit here.
Hmm, gotcha.
Yeah, there's a lot of latitude, uh, but there are, there are things related to the setbacks. I was looking, as, as you guys were talking, I was looking at the, uh, I was looking at the, at the District of Regulations, in the, in the downtown mixed use, or in the, in the downtown general business, um, we're talking about, um, we're talking about a minimum lot area of sixteen hundred square feet, um, but we're talking about maximum height of structures, go up to three stories. Uh, we're talking about zero, uh, front, zero setbacks on the side, uh, side lots, and also talking about buildings that are basically coming right up to the street and the sidewalk. So we're talking, you know, what it's trying to promote is that traditional downtown, multi-story, multi-use type of buildings, that are built right up to the, right up to the sidewalk, uh, parking either on the side or in the rear.
Okay.
But, that's in the downtown, right?
That's in the downtown, which I believe has, falls on.
I think it is.
Unless I'm mistaken, I don't, unfortunately, I threw, I printed these, I was, I was, I tapped them.
I think it was, it's on the office, wasn't it?
No, I think residential offices on the side.
No, I'm not, it wasn't residential.
You know, I've got a large map for the window, I was reading for Lori, let me grab it real quick, and we'll take a look.
Oh, yeah, fact is one in my box.
We just outdated these two, like, those, Victoria there. That one, we put two large ones for the wall, or for whoever needs larger ones. So, if we're looking at the train tracks here, we have industrial, and then the majority of those properties belong to Pasco, are all general business district downtown.
Not Pasco, he's on the other side, who are you talking about?
Who are we talking about?
We're talking about the guy who owns the...
Oh, you're talking, oh, I thought you was, I'm sorry, I thought you was talking about something.
No, 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 I'm talking about, talking about...
Okay, yeah, he's talking about Frank, on, on Main Street. Yeah, you see, I'm saying, uh, yeah, you're right, that's, yeah, I thought you was talking about Chris.
Yeah, so, Chris, Chris is on the other side.
He is on the residential office, but those have, those have these constraints.
So I can, he was, make that this.
Yeah, well, I have a small copy, we have a small copy.
Yeah, and, um, if you talk to Lori, she's got, she's got, she can give you copies of this.
Okay.
Yeah, we sent the guest number, so I can...
Yeah, Mike, no, I, I, here you go, Frank, after Chris.
Okay, planner, anything else?
Uh, nothing at this time.
Okay, there's nothing, there's nothing else to discuss from the table?
Motion wager.
Seconded, seconded, on paper?
Aye.